Now we'll call this Township Council Agenda Meeting of September 6th, 2022 to order. Good evening, everyone. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 22nd, 2021, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 28th, 2021, and the Newark Star Ledger on December 27th, 2021. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision, Public Access Channel 21, at 11:00 a.m. on Sundays, and are also available for viewing at www-parcepani.net. Would you all draw me in the face?
(Inaudible) through the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Ms. Grignani has an excused absence. Mr. Musella?
Here.
Mr. Neglia?
Here.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Fred Carr, Mayor Jamie Barberio, Township Attorney Mike Lavery, and Township Clerk Colette Madden, Council President. We have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, September 20th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., our regular meeting; October 4th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., our agenda meeting. Minutes will be approved at our next meeting. Presentations and reports. Mayor?
Well, all I have right now is just to give the council heads up. Right now, we're in the process of looking to replace retired police officers. By the end of the year, if we don't do that, we'll be down 10 police officers who are retired. So we're starting the process now and moving forward to replace those that are retired, not ones that we're going to replace through the budget. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Thank you. Anything from the council? Township Attorney?
No report, Council President.
Business Administrator?
No, sir.
Township Clerk?
No report, Council President. Thank you.
Township Officers and Committees' reports? I just have two items, just announcements. Just the Craftsman Farms Gala, October 8th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. I've gone to it every year for the last 30 years. It'd be nice for some other people to show up. It's kind of expensive now, but that's their primary fundraiser for the year. And also the bicycle tour through Lake Hiawatha, which is occurring on Saturday, starting off at Smithfield, and the route's been designated. The Police Department has approved it, and they will police watching the route. Anybody has a bicycle and wants to take a 10-mile ride, show up at 8:00 at Smithfield with your bicycle and $15. That activity is being sponsored by Rotary, Parcepani Rotary. Okay, I'll announce the bids taken and the to-be taken, and then we'll move on to public hearing. Bids taken, 8/4/22, one 2023 or newer freightliner, S2C medium-duty bus, or equivalent with ambulatory seats. Also taken, 8/16/2022, well 1A replacement. And item 3, 8/17/2022, one new TrackMan4Golf simulator or approved equivalent for the Northwest Country Club. Bids to be taken, 9/15/22, one new TrackMan4Golf. Why is it down there "taken" and "to be taken"?
Uh, Council President? So we took it out, we went for bid, there were no bids that were received, and we're going out again.
So it's a rebid?
It's a rebid, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Rebid on that is one new TrackMan4Golf simulator for the Northwest Country Club. Oh, and you do say "rebid" at the end. Okay. Entertainer motion, open the meeting to the public?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Karifi, seconded by Mr. Musella. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes. The floor is open to the public. On any matter, you have five minutes to speak.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I felt I had to come back for a rebuttal of the, what I interpreted or what I experienced as the last council meeting. To me, it was inappropriate. This council turned into a partisan political attack against the former mayor, and I think it was just a little bizarre. I read the Clarkin letter. I don't see anything that insinuates that you're a liar. It simply debates your figures in the budget. And I, you know, and then you say, "I'm not going to take it lightly." I don't know what that means. But to controvert a budget is not calling you a liar, it's calling you to explain yourself. Now, you said you'd have a meeting with these gentlemen, you never did. So, but if there was such misconduct by the former mayor, in the beginning it was 26, now it's 22 million, that was just squandered? Let's have a, let's conduct a preliminary investigation. If not, then we shouldn't say things that aren't true or that exaggerated just for, you know, political gain or power, really. Your, when Mayor Soriano wanted to increase the taxes, he was refused by the Republican Council. Now, the issue was explained in a nonpartisan way by Councilwoman Janice McCarthy about how we got into the financial situation. We did. Apparently, one in one ear and out the other. Now, Soriano had to implement a water and sewer, but he didn't do it, the council did it. Because if you don't know how the government works, then it wasn't the mayor who did it, it was the council who did it. Now we turn around after Soriano's plan, the same plan that you're implementing is virtually his plan. But because, the way I see it, he was a Democrat, it couldn't, he couldn't do it, he wasn't allowed to do it. So if that isn't partisanship or being arbitrary and compresious, I really don't know what is. Then he was blamed for a job that he appointed Mark Clarkin for, and I believe Mark Clarkin was relieved of that job, probably for COVID or other reasons. But it says right here, "It's part of the mayor's duty, appoint a confidential aide to serve as confidential aide to the mayor at the pleasure of the mayor." And I would assume that there's enough in the budget that he could do that with council's approval. So, but to say that he hired him top rate and everything, where's the proof? Because of the election, you dismissed Judy Hernandez, an environmental engineer, from the Planning Board. Now, in the past, I've seen these elections here, the word corruption and everything, that's, that's like, you know, kindergarten stuff. But apparently, because Judy, and I didn't find anything where she directly accused you, I couldn't find anywhere, being corrupt.
I'll shut with you later.
All right, but is it during an election? And are you, how are you benefiting Precippany by removing her with her credentials from the, from the Planning Board? So to me, that was just, again, vendetta. I won't take things lightly. You know, that's, I don't get it. And then with Mr. Neglia's attack about the, the face scanners and all, well, maybe the mayor, which is another one of his jobs, was trying to make accountability in the workforce to see actually what was going on, also to benefit taxpayers. He wasn't being Hitler or somebody, he was being, doing the mayor's job. You could find that also.
Nick, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I thought so. And then the Board of Education, you're not supposed to, here, isn't I? "I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or the gains of friends." We had members from the Board of Education coming here attacking the mayor. Inappropriate. But everybody gets away with it because we don't, in America now, you can do anything you want.
Time's up, Nick.
All right, and did you get the letter I left you, Paul, about the microchips? I sent it to Town Clerk. Did you get it?
I'll make sure we've reported it.
All right, and that was my answer about the library, the computers. I think you should read it. All right?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Mary Prezicki from 273 Marcela Road. I'm here to talk about the Precippany Police Department, and I might go over, but I kind of hope you would hear me out on this particular incident. I feel that the Precippany Police Department is a vital asset to our community. On a personal note, I would like to tell you my experience with the dedicated officers who came to my aid at a very critical moment in my life. My husband was suffering with severe dementia, which was what they called night terror hallucinations. It was later diagnosed as limb body dementia, for which there is no cure. One night at 7:30 p.m., he woke up from a nap, which had a night terror hallucination. It was extremely violent. He had no control of what was happening to him. My daughter and I could not calm him down, and we had to call 911. From the moment someone answered the 911 call to the final conclusion of this episode, which ended midnight, the police officers who came were outstanding. The officers who, all of them, to our, came to our aid, the most caring, understanding, compassionate, and individuals I have ever met. It was beyond words to say thank you to them. The senior officer, Danielle Conti, went above and beyond to rectify the situation. His junior partner gave my daughter, my son, and myself the comfort we needed to understand what was happening. They needed to report the incident to the prosecutor's office because it was considered domestic violence. Officer Conti recognized that it was a very serious dementia problem. He worked diligently to explain these to the prosecutor. He was continually in touch with his superior officer from the beginning to the end, which ended at midnight. He put in a call to get the judge to agree that the charge of domestic violence be dropped. He kept his junior officer informed in every detail. The junior officer would then inform us on how this would progress. The junior officer more, then comforted us. He reassured us that the situation would be resolved, and it did happen. For five hours, these dedicated officers went above and beyond their line of duty. The officer, Conti, and his partner, which I can't remember his name, were soon to go off duty, but they stayed with us. The senior officer, I felt, needed to mentor the junior officer. It is the key to success of Precippany Police Department. This needs to be done with adequate number of police officers for the department to continue their success. Therefore, I urge you, the council, and the public that's here, to support Mayor Barberio in his request to have adequate number of police to meet the needs of the residents of Precippany. Officers just do not write tickets, and they just do not prevent crime. They are there when you and I need, need them in a critical time, to resolve the situation in the best interest of all that was involved. I would also grate, great, I am also greatly thankful to his partner for what they did to save a family in crisis. The increase in the number of police in this department is vital to the success of every situation that they occur. And I hope you consider his proposal to adequately support the, the police officers that, that are in this town, and they are to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Okay, I'm Elaine Gavallus. I live at 66 Bound Brook Road, Precippany, of course. I work at the Lake Hiawatha Library. I've also worked at the Precippany Library. The Precippany Police have helped us numerous amounts of times at the library and also at my home. My husband, my friends, my coworkers, and neighbors all want more police. I was taken back at the last meeting when the mayor stated that we are at a dangerously low number of police, and our population is growing. So I am just saying that I'm definitely for getting more police. I want more police. They do so much. If you go on their website, you will see everything that they do, and I know that the mayor is giving a crime prevention thing, and that's wonderful. And I think that if people, you know, go on the website, they will see everything. And I was going to read their mission, but I left it at my job, so their mission is just wonderful if you read that, and for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the council is supporting the mayor in getting more police.
Thank you. I hope the residents...
Anyone else wish to speak? Do you know what, come forward? I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Karifi. Roll call, Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
May I respond, Council President?
Sure. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. I'll start with the police with regards to the two ladies that came up to speak. When I came back to Town Hall on January 4th, and I did say this in the last meeting, the chief came to my office and the PBA president, letting me know that we're at a dangerously low level. And that's unacceptable. Now, the gentleman in the back can say all he wants to say about everything being political. He showed us a mind throwing political shots at me over the last four years when I was mayor previously, with regards, you know, backdoor deals and all that kind of stuff. So he doesn't have a problem doing that. But he always comes up to seem to always want to defend the Democrats against the Republican Council, because I guess that's his job. I don't understand that. Maybe I suffer from a disorder that when I tell people the truth, they get mad at me. So maybe that's the case. I have no clue. But with that being, with that being said, with regards to the comment being made that I didn't appoint the individual back to the Planning Board, I'll tell you why they didn't appoint. Because the person was filling in for the mayor. That is why. She was an alternate for the mayor. You can nod your head all you want, that's a fact. I'm a Class 1 member, and I come to the board meetings, especially the ones that are controversial. That's what a mayor's supposed to do. But that's not what the previous mayor did. That woman went on his behalf. If I'm wrong, Council President, you were there?
No, you're, you're correct.
So, so I took the role as the mayor to be at those meetings that were controversial, and you should, the mayor should be. Well, the mayor wasn't there. Every single application, the 3,332 units that were approved, the mayor wasn't there. And you're the one that's upset about trees being knocked down, but the mayor wasn't there to defend them. No, no, no. I couldn't respond to you. It's my turn now. I couldn't, well, I couldn't rebuttal you. Now it's my turn. That's it. You, no, you, you can come up the next meeting. But that being said, so, so that being said, with regards, I want to go back to the Police Department. You ladies said it right. We're at dangerously low numbers, and if we don't do something now, we're never going to catch up. I don't know if you've been reading in the papers, the burglaries that are happening in town, stealing catalytic converters. We, we, we're at minimum of 81 deployable police officers, and I explained this over the past few meetings. So, you weren't here in the beginning of the meeting. I made a recommendation to the council, accepted it, that we have 10 police officers that are retiring this year. Almost, we'll be at 10. We're going to replace those 10. And we're going to go, we're going to hire more. Already have out, the applications out for them to be returned and returned in to us. Now, with regards to me making the comments I made, with regards to a paid press release that was put out by the Precippany Democrat Committee, it was a paid press release that was put out, tapping the Precippany, so they can get in there and they can word it in such a way that it sounds like the mayor was misrepresenting when he wasn't misrepresenting. The mayor did represent the budget properly on July 21st, again on August 2nd, and then again on August 16th. But the problem is, it didn't fit their narrative. So when it doesn't fit their narrative, they keep coming out and they keep getting upset. Okay? Well, the bottom line is, nobody wanted to do what they had to do, but we had to fix it. Let's go back to 2010, when I took office. Let's talk about the surplus. The surplus, the total surplus in Precipony at that time, between the current fund, the utilities, was $10 million. When I left office, it was $23 million. So whatever funds that I used, they were being replenished. Okay? Let's get to 2018. You see a significant drop, significant. And then in 2019 to 2020, what happened was, they used money to offset the taxes. Not only did they do that, the amount of funds that they used was like 3, 4 million dollars between all, everything, and it wiped it out clear. So when they got to, no, no, had nothing to do with the BA here, nothing to do with the CFO. So basically, when you got to 2021, you were pretty much depleted. Okay? So it took three years to deplete that amount of money. So if I used $9 million, like the previous mayor said, okay, I left you 23, where'd the 14 million go? It's, it's simple math. When I give the numbers out, they don't want to hear the numbers. Nobody wants to hear the numbers, they're factual numbers. They're told to me, and I looked at them, I looked at all the audit reports, from 2010 all the way to 2020, we just got the audit report in this, this time around. Okay? So when, when the gentleman comes over and says that, you know, "I'm defending myself, I'm not going to lie to you. I'm defending myself, I'm defending the township, and we're going to move the township forward." Okay? We have a lot of good things that are going to be happening going forward for the township. Our revenues are, are picking up, things are starting to turn the corner, but it's going to take time. So when I got back into office, I was 8 million in the hole. Now, the gentleman said that this council didn't, didn't, didn't want the mayor to raise taxes. That wasn't the case. The case was, they wanted to cancel appropriations. So when you cancel appropriations, it gets worse the following year. Well, that's what this council did in 2021. They said no, and the Democrats said no, not just the Republicans. We can't cancel the appropriations and think we're not going to have to pay the bill later on. Well, that's what would have happened. So...
Well, he also tried to borrow $5 million to balance his budget, and the council unanimously said no to that too. Mayor, that's, that's, are you done?
I'm done.
All right. Just...
When you're ready.
All right, you go first.
All right, thank you. I want to touch on the word that was used, misconduct. That word was never used by Mayor Barberio or myself. Mismanagement was. Mismanagement. So let me be clear on that. And, no, it's not the same thing. Mismanagement means that you take $23 million and you squander it. You put the town $8 million in the hole. You install a surveillance system, a state-of-the-art surveillance system that's not needed, and put 80 cameras out there and 80 pictures in your office so you can watch everyone. It's doing foolish things like putting an eye scanner in and spending funding on that, hiring someone that doesn't have any experience to a title they have no knowledge of what is. To me, that's mismanagement, and that's foolish spending. Approving a major construction project without a water study being done, and that costs the taxpayers even more. Trying to eliminate the SRO so you have more funding for your budget because you mismanaged. Now, don't, don't, I don't care if you believe it or not, this is my turn to speak, and I gave you the courtesy. But that's a fact. Now, you mentioned about the Board of Ed. I can't control who sits at the back table. They're welcome to come to every meeting they want. But as a former Board of Ed member, I know what happened when I was there, and what I said about the SRO is the truth. So when I say the word "mismanage," please don't change it to misconduct, because it's two different meanings. Thank you.
All right, just, just two items I wanted to bring up. I've been on the Precipony Township Planning Board for 26 years. I was there when Ken Prezicki was there too, years ago. And the mayor is a sitting member of the Planning Board. He appoints the Planning Board, and he's a sitting member. Mayor Soriano chose not to attend Planning Board meetings and designated someone else to take his place. Well, Mayor Barberio attends the meetings and didn't need her as a delegate for him. He goes to the meetings, so that position was no longer needed. So I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing that's important is, is fund balance. Now, the township has a fund balance, the three utilities each have their own fund balance. And when Mayor Barberio was taking money out of the fund balance, sewer or water, he only took what could be replaced the following year. He never depleted the fund balance in the utilities, only what could be replaced in the following years. That was what Mayor Soriano violated. He exceeded those amounts. I'm, I'm done. You can... All right, Paul.
You brought up the fact about the individual that was hired, and you said you don't know the proof for the pay. You can Oprah what that individual, Mr. Clarkin, was paid for the position that he was in without any experience. He was brought in at top pay. Top pay with no experience. You can Oprah his sal, what his salary was, you'll see that he was brought in at top pay. Okay? And then I'd just like to say, you know, Mary, and, you know, what you guys brought up about the police, you know, being a retired police officer, I just want to say thank you, that means a lot, especially what's been going on in the media the last couple of years. You know, it's things, it's comments like that that it makes the job all worthwhile for us. You know, you talked about how the officers, you know, and Dan Conti's a fine, he's a very good officer, and you saw that. And it's not just, you know, police officers just don't write tickets. Those are other things that police officers do on the job, and being that our Police Department right now is depleted with officers, you know, had, had other things come in, he wouldn't have been able to do that and spend that time with you, because they're working so short. So these are things, and that's why, you know, we are in agreement that we need to, to bolster up the department, because it is very depleted right now, and, and crime rates are going up, and, you know, it's just what we need to do. But I just want to say thank you on behalf of our Police Department and the rest of law enforcement in the community for your comments. Thank you.
Really can't. Time, yeah, I'm sorry, time's up.
Okay.
Council President, since everybody else spoke, can I say something then?
Sure.
There, there's two themes that have been hit on here tonight. Number one is the budget, and then number two is the police, which I'll come to. You know, I did vote against the, the budget at the previous meeting, and I recognize the impossible hand that we were all dealt as a result of the, the previous activities of the administration. I didn't vote against the, the mayor, I didn't vote against my colleagues. I voted because we were dealt a situation from which a, a, a financial... um, from which a, a, a financial increase was, uh, worked to, uh, to avoid. And so, the, the previous administration, um, in, in my view, having examined the budget and seeing how far revenues were overestimated, and, and the, uh, the mismanagement that existed, uh, I, I think that we're gonna be in better hands now, that there's a different administration and, and council makeup. And the, the second thing is that, uh, as it relates to the police, uh, I, I spend other people's money as carefully as I spend my own. And when I hear from residents that their cars are being stolen and broken into, that their life possessions that have tremendous sentimental value, and then the personal stories like your own, that go beyond material possessions and how the police officers conduct themselves, th- this is a, an important time to bolster the police force. Because I want this to be a town that makes the headlines for the right reasons, that it's well-run, that it doesn't have crime, and that way we can continue to attract new residents and new businesses to come and set up and prosper.
Okay. Thank you. Alright, moving on. We get to, um, non-consent agenda, resolution. Frank?
That's me? Oh, I'm sorry, I was waiting on the ordinances.
Page 3.
Okay. Resolution. R 2022-126, authorizing an ambulance coverage agreement with Little Viking Football, Inc. Motion to approve the resolution above by myself.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Neglia, seconded by Mr. Corrapi, roll call, Mr. Corrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and payroll and bills list?
CFO Juan Garibe recommends authorization for payment, authorized payment of the September 2nd, 2022 regular payroll estimated at 1.6 million dollars. Payment of bills from voucher list of September 1st, 2022 through September 3rd, 2022, estimate totaling 1.46 million, $16,192. Motion to approve the authorization for payment, made by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Musella, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Corrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Executive Session Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas township councils of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss contract negotiations, PBA attorney-client privilege, PLA ordinance, attorney-client privilege, personnel, and whereas minutes will be kept, once a matter involving the confidentiality and above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be resolved by the township council, the township of Precipiny Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from the meeting. Motion to adjourn into closed session by myself.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corrapi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Corrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yep.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn into closed session. Uh, there is no action that is anticipated to be taken for the public. Just so you guys are aware, you don't have to stick around. Alright, thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Corrapi, seconded by Mr. Neglia to get back into public session. Roll call, Mr. Corrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, if we could just turn it over to the township attorney for just one moment, before we make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, sure, we emerge from executive session at, looks like 8:28 PM, where we discussed, uh, three matters. Uh, contract negotiations, PBA attorney-client privilege matters, dealing with PLA ordinance, and attorney-client privilege matter dealing with personnel. No official action was taken, copies of these minutes will be available at such time as the council determines there is no harm to the public interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corrapi, seconded by Mr. Neglia, roll call, Mr. Corrapi?
Yes.
Mr. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. Neglia?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Okay, we're adjourned, have a good night, everyone.